By the board chair, citizen may comment on items related to school visits to business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens have identified themselves but proceed to make comments with clear and specific comments. Basic rules of the form are any given. The Chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to and through brief personal privacy rights or due to obstruction of other rights and progress. The public should realize that this is just individually conducted within a purpose for our. Once again, we'll have the four-minute timer for people who want to make comments. And also, I want to reiterate that if you want to comment, be sure that you somehow intake a contact number for Dr. Wisher, who will show it back to you. So either write it on the sheet or contact us at the main issue. Okay, like, who we can?
There was nobody on there.
Did you know we're on that? All right. Um, consent agenda. We can do this as one motion now, right? We don't have to do it separately. So, um, consent agenda, we're looking for the approval of the agenda for one minute prior to meeting. Have to take substitute.
I just had one question, minutes. Under the principals' report, Mr. Gross, he stated the main focus here is adults. Was that his? I didn't know. I forgot what context for that. But last year, our focus was about kids, reading kids every day, playing by them. This year, our focus is going to be on the adults in the building and culture of that. So you've got to work on culture of kids and you've got to work on culture of health.
If there needs any other discussion, I guess we are. Motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, the approvals are bill for Denver, and Denver for the.
The side-by-side education law, which is very cool, and it's like just a subscription.
Those are the CSPD ones. We're just a host for the money. So it shows up on our report, but we get it back from the state when I go and do the draws for it. So, yeah.
Is that a, is a accessory as well?
Yeah. So anyone on there, like, anyone that says Rocco, that's going to be part of that. Yeah, the side-by-side, Rob Reynolds, that one's there. We're not letting, but there's not really a way to prevent other than.
Yeah, oh, I understand. I just wondered if they're still thinking that they have to guard.
Well, and that's even considering a lot of the recycling, like paper, that's not even going into the disposal.
Okay, so they are recycling.
But that is something that we have to, like, do, like, haul it in all ourselves.
Yeah.
Which we're going to have to look at that because still, where he can't, he can't be doing that physically. So to have recycling picked up is another bill, and it's not inexpensive whenever you think about just having it picked up.
Yes, unfortunate cheaper to throw it in the trash can.
Which would be that, our, so we might have to do a little research into best cost scenario when it comes to paper goods. Because I would, I would guess a lot of our trash is paper.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? All of the favors, approval of the bill?
Aye.
All of the correspondence and public participation, yes, yes, but no one signed that one. Okay. Um, the next.
I'll delay that.
The West Valley, that'll be in the.
Okay.
Right. Okay, the West Valley here, and this is the only station in Florida.
Okay, yeah, I'm Tessa, I'm the PTO. So there's been talk of doing another fundraiser, we've been kind of approaching, asking whether we're not going to do it. And doing so, like, we need, like, another kind of, what are we going to fundraise for? Last time we raised $34,000, $24,000. $2,700 of it came from businesses, from donations, the $31,000 and $924 went by students. And we were able to keep 93% of all the funds that we had raised. So the company we have, we did not take too much of a profit, just they have their costs of using their website, the credit card fee, but not a whole lot. And that was raised by 43% of students. So we didn't even have a school yet to do that. We purchased the outdoor equipment and we're working on finishing that, or we're going to spend the money on the middle school with left. It's also nice with the company we did use, you can use, have individual rewards, classroom rewards, and whole school rewards, and then can crush like that. So this is kind of something to think about, we're just finishing up bidding, everything's settled, our five-year grant, so we can be on Amazon and then have anyone to purchase from Amazon.
Great, hi, I'm Jo Kowalk, I teach kindergarten, we're off to a really great start. We're grateful that we added our fifth kindergarten classroom. Early dynamic is amazing, I'm really glad that we get to work with her. So today, I have a couple of my students that would like to tell you a little bit about kindergarten, so I'm going to introduce Alma Dakers and Emma Rose. You want to just read them? And then, you want to tell them how you felt for most of the day of your first day of kindergarten?
And then, right after recess, we came in to do our.
Right, and then, what did you have to say about your first day of school?
I was all happy because I was glad to have my first day of school. And I liked to be with my friend Albert because she makes like one preschool and usually like.
And we've been working on the Warrior Ray, one of the first ones, do you guys want to say it with me? I think we are.
Kind and we stick up for each other.
That's true. Yeah, so, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. You should spare him the hand. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
So, principal. Yeah, a couple things we're working on this year, like I mentioned, with the adult culture of the building, the culture between the adults, is our shared beliefs. So we've been looking at, taking a purposeful look back at our governing documents that we've had over the years, and I mentioned before, just because of certain things, COVID being a part of it, and the company who went through to help us with it, the main person in that passed away, so we've kind of gone through and scoured old notes on how we did that, and, you know, as a whole staff, immediate looking at that, recreating them, or adjusting them, kind of take a look at each one, determine, change it. So we're in the middle of that right now. It's been a lot of work, the outreach initiatives, we've been focused on that, and bringing that to our staff meeting in September, and we've had a couple of that since then, and we're going to do another activity in October about that. It's hopefully going to help us just, you know, redefine ourselves, what we believe in as educators, just as a fresh start. That's kind of what they, they are intended to do, is be non-negotiable with what we believe in as educators, or with their. You've probably seen them in the past with other things, the shared recent posts, you've probably know, they've just been around but not really ever addressed. So with so many new staff members, now the perfect time to start and do it again. The data, we are almost done with smart testing. We got to third and fourth grade, and we're noticing some really interesting stuff. With the third grade, especially, that was our kindergarten year during the COVID shutdown. And then the first graders during a kind of our more unusual year. And if you look at it, every single class is like this, where you have really, really high scores, a little tiny bit in the middle, and then a lot that are not. And so it's really interesting to look at that because, and I mean, lots of people why, but, or that we could say might be because of, but you don't see that in the fourth. You see much more of a traditional, you know, look to it, and we've kind of noticed that with this, with this group, that this third grade class is the first year that they've taken the STAR test. That may be a factor, but it might not be either, but it's really interesting just to look at that data. Also, for some reason, this year kindergarten, with the math, is scoring incredibly good, and that, which is pretty unique, usually, you know, you see reading scores that are a lot higher, but wow, there's a lot of really high math. Why is that? So, yeah, going to take some diving into that, a little bit more even, we've got lots of kids on our TSS, I guess, board, on our list to look at. We've seen a huge increase in emotional leads in kids across the board, on the maturity level that we're seeing in these grade levels, especially third and fourth, this is not what we're used to seeing. So it's kind of a slow process that way, but luckily, we have an amazing counselor who leads into those classrooms and teaches FELs, works really well with the back end of the kid. And we're knowing next, which year these going, getting these kids where they need to be, or at least really working on. You guys have any reporting that kind of tracks that, and that you can bring to us?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, a lot of this is going to follow you guys, just inside of how this progression is.
I could plug in and show you, you know, next time, maybe November, if we're done with that, we got to create up some more, we're able to monitor that, right? And the next kind of progress report would come next, right?
Know that all kids, tier, which is tier one benchmark, at least three times a year, it's all going to be due in the fall, to kind of get a scope of what we're dealing with, and then, what, how to design groups, and then we do it again in the winter, around January, start halfway point, individual candidates. And then, we also, we test kids more often than that if they're in groups, we do that every six to eight weeks, by so that we know if they're making progress or not, if not, switch up what they're doing, you know? That way, you've got six kids, that three of them are showing up together. That's the math thing.
Yeah, yeah. That was the outline.
You ruined the curve. I think Mike is so nice to hear, you know, that's going to be, it's not easy as a kid friend to speak in front of people. I think we really like to bring kids in, rock, show what they're doing, so many cool things. Thanks, you guys.
And Tina isn't here, she's had a family emergency, so she's in therapy. Yeah, so I have a few things. So next, war meeting in November, I'm going to ask that we have closed session at the end to discuss the report from the security consultant, because the report in and of itself is, can be sensitive, if the public knows, we can't have closed session to review that report, and I do want y'all to see, I haven't gotten it yet, but I'm anticipating that we'll have it before the November meeting. So we'll have just a brief closed session after the regular meeting to look at that. It did go very well, I will say that, we had some minor, I feel like minor recommendations. Let you know, for just kind of my personal, professional growth, through the, I think it's the, several organizations, but through the Montana Superintendent's Association, I have a mentor, who has been person monthly, we had our meeting this morning, and the veteran superintendent, he's retired, and does this for the fun of it now. But he's also kind of my go-to if I have a question that I can't figure out on my own. He's been really helpful with some things, especially being new to the state, there are things that I have experienced within other places that might not necessarily help them in Montana. So that's been very helpful. You have the, a part of your informational items, the fall count, but I also brought the two attendance reports. The one is as of Friday, and one is as of the same time last year. And I've highlighted the dates otherwise, so he knows, and we can see that we are actually sound. And then you also have the five grade levels, and you can pass and make your own comparisons. So as of Friday, this last Friday, there were 763 students enrolled, the same Friday last year, there were 770. So kind of at the same ballpark. And then, so we had 133 participants in the parent survey that was posted online. I've gone through that, and I'm actually working on compiling the generalized data into one document that I will share with you on a Friday update, but I wanted to just kind of share some highlights from the short answer responses that are non-identifying for people who completed those. So I selected some quotes that were kind of representative of most of the responses. One of, the first question was, what has been a highlight of your student experiences at West Valley School? But we have from parents, her relationship with the teachers and staff, my children come home feeling cared and cared for by their teachers, the welcoming environment and support from teachers and staff, feeling like part of a community, having a positive relationship with her teachers and classmates, the teachers are amazing, my children speak with their teachers with high regard, having smaller classes, I really appreciate moving teachers around, or hiring more than class sizes increase. So in general, most people feel very strongly about the relationships that their children have with the teacher at that school, which is extremely important. How could West Valley School improve? Representative quote, it's construction of new school facilities to accommodate growing student population, parking lots, and drop off and pickup, before and after school program for working parents, the schooling is more safe to meet growing demands, outreach and communication with the community as a whole is lacking, school board administrative communication in particular, the community wants transparency to trust in our system, I am concerned about the checks and balances, accountability and sustainability, we desperately need new facilities, but we need to get the day-to-day finances and general operations shored out so that everyone can get on board. So in general, improved communication, which, you know, we're, we're working on, and then there's the accountability aspect that we're aware of and working on, and of course, just the facilities in general, we know that we're, we're pretty full. And the most pressing, what is the most pressing issue facing West Valley School? It's kind of repetitive at this point, not enough learning for growth, amount of students versus amount of teachers, class sizes and parking lot congestion, numbers of students in elementary facilities. That is not a whole lot, that is surprising, things that we're aware of, but it's good to see that as a community, we're, we're seeing similar things. And these are topics that will roll into our strategic planning and working on over the course of the year. None of these are things that are going to be solved in a, you know, a single day, but it's good to see that, that we're all kind of thinking along the same line. And there was nothing that was extremely surprising. So I think that that is a good indicator that there is communication, there is some transparency, we'll continue to work on that.
So come back to the security report, is there a, I know you kind of hit it at a high level there, and I get the fact that, like, the detail of the report is important in a closed session. Is there kind of an executive summary that we can provide outside of the closed session, just so kind of, you know, the general, you know, parent community can kind of deal with safety and teachers as well?
Once, so the way I would like to proceed with that is, one, I don't know what the report is going to actually look like, so I would like to get that in, I would like to have that closed session so that we can discuss as a group what we feel is most appropriate for public consumption, and then either put something out on the, or in multiple places, the website, the Facebook page, there will be some security updates that will need to take place, but before putting out something that's, that's public, I think it's important that we, as a school board and administrative team, are all on the same page with what we believe is, you know, the priorities for public communication, and when we go through that information.
Does that make sense?
Consideration as the designation of David Baker, Middle School Teacher. That was lost when I figured it was. Oh, yeah, you're right. There we go. I tried to say it. There we go, consideration, Montana, data privacy, tight task.
Typecast. So with, so there are three data privacy agreements on the agenda. And this is something that Kat does a very good job of explaining, and I will do my best. So there are data privacy agreements within the state that we can kind of feedback on if they're already adopted and they're approved and they've been through MTSBA. Then there are others that I think typecastic, where we're the first in the state to use it. So we're the first one to introduce this privacy agreement through this company. The other two made some modifications. So anytime there's a new one or there's modifications made, we send those through MTSBA and they review and make sure everything is going to be up and up and they meet the standards. And then they come back to us and then the school board approves them. So they, they've been reviewed, they meet the minimum standards as far as student privacy requirements. And we just have to go through the formality of having them approved. One of the committees that we have in the school is a online platform committee where we review at the teen websites that teachers are asking to use. The first step is to make sure that they have all of the appropriate student privacy agreements in place. And if they don't, then the site is not approved and Kat actually blocks the site on our server. So that if a site isn't approved, we don't have to worry about somebody accessing it anyhow. But if it meets the privacy standards, then we look at it from a curriculum standpoint of do we need it, is it appropriate? And we want from an instructional standpoint. So these three are just some that either are brand new to the state or have some minor updates, but they have been reviewed by the attorney.
But these are all three websites that teachers are using?
These are instructional. So typecastic is the actual online curriculum that is used in the elementary STEM class. So that is her typing curriculum. The HMH is our math curriculum and discovery education is the middle school and the elementary discovery app. It's just middle school is our science curriculum.
So typecastic isn't necessarily new to the school then, right?
I think it is.
Oh, it is new.
I think Mrs. Winger, that that was the program that she looked into and wanted to use to share. Anything that requires a student to log in, we are required to have a data privacy agreement. So if it's just a general website that the teacher just opens up and they read something off the front of it, we don't have to worry about that. But anywhere that any site that generates a computer login where our individual student data is going to be collected, we have to have a data privacy agreement.
What's the, how?
Yes.
What's that related to?
That's our math curriculum. That's the math publisher.
Good, I'll make a motion to approve the identity data privacy agreements for typecastic. How many of them, discrimination?
They weren't, what discussion on that? I vote in favor.
I, I.
Opposed. Right, that consideration about district student attendance agreement. Five that are West Valley district residents that are attending other schools and fifteen that are residents of other districts that are attending West Valley School.
So these are in addition to, I think it was in August that we had the forty-four. So we ended up with fifty-nine out of district total. I think last year it was like sixty-four or sixty-seven. So it's down a little bit. And then we have five that are our residents, but they're going to Whitefish or Vessel, like another surrounding school. So that should be the rest of them, as far as we know.
Because we didn't have a good number, so we just reokayed what we knew. So we start, are these new people or?
So they have to fill out the agreement, you know, to request their child to come here or, you know, their child to go elsewhere, whether they didn't get it back in time, maybe they didn't pay the tuition yet. So that's why it's the rest of them now.
So are we, I understood though that we are, our policy is we're not going to take in out-of-district students unless they have siblings that are out there.
Well, I mean, we talked about this before, yeah.
But what, what MTSBA recommends is you you accept out-of-district transfers unless it's going to create an unnecessary burden on the school district. So let's say we had our second grade cohort and we had, and it was full. There's twenty kids in every classroom and then we had a parent who wanted to enroll a second grader. We could say no to that enrollment because if someone moves into the district, then there's not room for people to move in. But let's say in first grade, there's fourteen students per class and we can go up to twenty or twenty-two. If someone wanted to enroll in first grade because there's room, according to MTSBA, we allow them to enroll because otherwise, unless we can prove it creates an unnecessary burden, it can be construed as discriminatory that we're picking and choosing which students we're letting enroll. And that we can, if a parent wanted to push the issue with it, then they could potentially have grounds to. But as long as they're safe, then we wouldn't have to hire an extra teacher or it wouldn't displace a resident student, the recommendations that we allow the enrollment. So if we recommend, so if we allow enrollment, then the next year we get West Valley students legitimately in our, in our area that overload that classroom, then we deal, then we deal with the new teacher. And I mean, I get that confused. At one point you said that we would just kind of not, that any of the kids come into that school and you say, well, West Valley, the West Valley students. Because even though it looked like there might be an opening at one point, it's a norm. And now, you know, now it's not like it's going to act like it was, but we felt that but it knew, but nothing, that we would jeopardize the whole because of shortage of space. Now we're kind of back checking on that a little bit, am I right?
Well, no, because these are kids that have been here. There's no new ones.
Okay.
They just didn't get that. I mean, it could be, right.
So if, for instance, if we had a family who, they come in tomorrow and they're wanting to do an out-of-the-district enrollment for the middle school. Right now, the classes in the middle school are pretty full and we would treat them as bad and potentially say no. In some of our elementary classrooms, we may potentially say no, just because the numbers are already high. But we also have some elementary classrooms or not just the classrooms, but the grade levels themselves that aren't full or close to being full. We're definitely going to give ourselves a caution because we don't want to end up in a situation where a new family moves to West Valley and they're trying to enroll and then we have to tell a non-resident student, we're not, we can't just kick kids out and we don't want to overburden our classes. So we'll always have a cushion of being able to accept more enrollment, even with the out-of-district enrollment. But if there's room, technically, we should allow them.
But any, any new enrollment is going to have to come through the approval board. So at that, at that point.
And before it gets, before it gets to here, we're going to look at the principals and counselors and I will look at the class sizes, especially like I said, the middle school, but with those, there, there was a couple of rooms that just, if we didn't hire an ELA teacher, we've kind of split, and Tina did some creative things. The middle school probably, we would not be able to accept. And we would be able to say, because of our current enrollment and class sizes, we are denying this request. Elementary, it would be.
So for me, what you mean is we have five sections in kindergarten.
Right.
So we can go to twenty in each one, so it's a hundred kids.
And that's still like keeping class sizes small because it sounds like the overall community wants to keep class sizes small.
That's keeping it small. Yeah, that's not an overcrowding number. And so then we have eighty-three, I think, in the early years. So we could potentially have, you know, room in kindergarten. But second grade is a different story. We have like five sections of that and we have ninety-five or ninety-six secondary. So we, there's not a lot of work in the area. We have like four before you start to get over that twenty number. Third grade is a little higher, twenty-six or third grade's twenty-eight. You just have to look at the average number in the class or in your.
Getting this feeling that we should have some kind of a policy written down that protects us against somebody getting mad about this? Like maybe it's like.
There is.
A ninety-five percent of our class max so that we do that wiggle room for people moving here, but we probably should have something that we just follow and be done.
There is policy. I looked at it way early on when we were having, you know, the updated enrollment. I haven't looked at it recently. I, I don't expect now that school has started that we would get out-of-district. I don't know historically how that's been. So it's something that maybe we want to put on the radar for the spring as we're getting ready to go into next school year, to have that, those parameters in place. And that gives us time to run it through MTSBA and just make sure that we're not, I, I feel like one of my responsibilities is to make sure we don't get sued. And that is one of those things that they say. And if a parent wanted to press the issue on discrimination, so we'll set those boundaries and make sure it's legal and all the up and up, and then we'll have that ready to go for next year.
I like that. And I think from our standpoint, and obviously, you know, we're likely not even going to know the name or any reason to have any discriminatory decision against a potential student. But like Marilyn's point, and then to your point, you know, if you're, if you're underloaded or if you have room in kindergarten, the grades transition through. And right now, from a building capacity standpoint, you know, we really don't have extra room to.
Right, if that kindergarten class grows next year, having those extra students could create.
Exactly.
And we don't, we don't want to start, because it's not what's best for kids, for any kid. We don't want to start them here and then knowing that in a year or two, we may have to tell them, there's not room for you anymore. So.
Exactly.
Because that.
I think it's just from our perspective, it's going to be, have to be a really compelling reason to accept new out-of-district students, just given our constraints on our current role. But you guys recognize that, you guys will take that consideration for you.
I think that last year, we voted not to accept any new students.
I researched.
From the MTSBA consideration at that point, do you remember?
I went, no, but I went back to all the minutes. I think it was in August when we had this discussion before and I read every.
And it didn't say?
It was, it said like in the future, we should, but it was never a hard no.
Because I remember talking about it, saying, okay, if kids have siblings here, then that and I would give them coming.
Yeah.
But we were going to, but that was only for now. At, at which point we did not, you know, start a little kindergarten and then kids that had, whose kid had, whose siblings weren't here. Because we really felt strongly at that point that with these state considerations and the wish for small class, to let every kid that wants to come, West Valley's got an awesome education and there's a lot of parents who love it and they have a huge application.
Fifty-nine total, yeah.
Go on, seven hundred fifty plus kids, that's seventy percent.
Yes, right, for now.
For now, right. But I think, yeah.
And I think charging the tuition helps, helps keep it balanced.
If you're interested in how many of us are staffed.
I was going to say a proportion, a percentage of that fifty-nine are also staffed. So that.
Probably quite a large, because I think then just came for every teen kid staffed.
I think it is kind of conceived though in the community that I've heard that if you're not in district and you're a new family, you're not going to get into West Valley because we are over, you know, we, we're trying to build a new school because we don't have the capacity. So at the same time, you know, it kind of goes against what we're portraying too, that we need in the school.
But, and even at that, after we get a new school, we don't need to just accept anybody that thinks they didn't want to come to our college.
I think if you get that out there, your floodgate is going to open up.
So we're not advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
So what they're saying, if we just, once they.
They've already been here or their siblings or, yeah, and they just got their paperwork in or whatever the case may be, yeah.
And we would know on like another budget or another action item if it was an actual new family and they weren't here before.
Well, yeah, going forward we would, yeah. So these were already included in that first group. We just didn't have the proper paperwork. So we couldn't say, you know, for one, we don't know for sure if they're coming, they're here, but we don't have the paperwork or if we didn't pay their tuition. So they weren't marked as being complete. So, yeah, this is just the finalization of all our kids. There could be one or two that might trickle in if, you know, I know last year when I started, there were people like in March that finally sent the paperwork. It was like, if that's what it was, not going to be many. And then you would know.
There were some issues with orders and, and there were some kids that were coming in with the board.
No, going forward, you would know if it's that from you to the school or something.
And there are some technicalities where we don't have a choice. If our school is geographically closer than the school, the child's own school, or if there's some kind of safety reason or something like that, I remember reading through the law, there's a long list. It even goes into how many mountain passes you have to go over to get to the school. Then it's not, it's, it's a required admission because it's, it's what is best for the student, the safety of the student, for them to go to the school that is a closer proximity. But those, we would be aware of and we would let you know that these are the circumstances around this business for our students.
I think that's why it's important to have that policy and review it, make sure it makes sense and it's legal and then just follow it.
Right.
Get in trouble with anybody at any time.
Yeah, so we need to motion to, okay, that out-of-district student attendance agreement as the student, that's what we're doing.
Motion to approve the out-of-district student attendance. I've gone other places. Fifteen coming here.
Right, I'll vote favor.
I, I.
Think, next, again, action item is consideration on the designation of Jeanne Robb, parent professional.
She's of another position with Central.
Only question to approve here, let's mention.
Do we need to replace this? Are we going to need to?
Most likely. We have our admin meetings in the morning and we will discuss if there are any room in the schedule to make adjustments. Most likely what will need to happen, she was in a more specialized assignment and what we would need to do would be to move one of our current paras, who's more experienced, into her position. And then if we hired someone new, they would take over kind of that more generalized role and we'd have someone veteran that goes over to specialized role. But we are budgeted for the para that, that particular salary is, is in the budget we accounted to spend money on this, this position this year. And the savings of not replacing this para is not going to get us out of the physical that we're already in. But I do think that it would be in the best interest of how the school is functioning to replace the para at this point. And then we go into next year and at the end of this year, looking at how we want to budget for paras for next school year and then make a determination whether or not we need to reduce staff and that happening. This is that adult education that we get money that is just for adult education. The parent survey, um, we had close to thirty who were in favor of having community fitness. We also had a pretty significant number for um like an adult art class and the Love and Logic, which is a parenting class. Um, once those teachers kind of have their plans organized, we'll bring in contracts to do those as well. But this is money that it is part of a levy, but it is only to, we can only spend it on this type of program. And Tara has done this in the past, she spoke to you at the last meeting about it. And it is, it's just something to, to bring our community in and get them opportunities to learn something new. And if we have other teachers who come up with, with proposals over the course of the year, we should consider those as well.
You know the balance between what it brings them and what we're spending for?
I know that there was carryover and there's been carryover because there hasn't, because of limitations. There have, there hasn't been as much adult edge, people haven't been able to come in. But that is something that it would be a very hard line once that money is spent and the, the programs are locked, done.
And so we're still under that though?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So there's.
It's beginning to build up now.
Yeah, we've, we've got a little. And it's not a huge expense because really it's just paying for the person's time. There's some of that money that is used, that can be used for supplies. So if we did our classes to buy paint and canvas and things like that. But the majority of it, we just use to pay the teachers for their time in teaching the classes.
I'll make a motion to Tara.
All those in favor? Consideration as a budget amendment.
So this is. We, we have with the state a reserve account that was briefly discussed at the last, or the budget. So I had that we can be holding, because we honestly did not know where that money came from or what it was for. And because it wasn't part of our general fund. And the way Cindy explained it did, each year over many, many years, the additional money has been left in the general fund. It rolls over to this account, so it's kind of like a savings account. But we can't just go and take money out of it, we have to ask for it and we have to have good reasons to ask for it. And it also cannot exceed ten percent. We're not at ten percent yet, but it's like. Somewhere in that ballpark. So because of the, because of our projected expenditures being in excess of our general fund. We are requesting two hundred fifty thousand out of that reserve fund. We do not anticipate needing two hundred fifty thousand. Whatever is left remaining at the end of the year will go back into the reserve. But the purpose of it will be to pay salaries over the remainder of the, over the end of the school year. The next step is a resolution, which is an action item, um, that the board will have at the next school board meeting. And one of the things that um worth noting is once we get to the point where we are spending that reserve money. It will have, it will be specially coded and we'll be able to track what is reserved money and what is money out of our general fund. So that we're able to follow all of that and connect all of those dots. And then we will, going into next year, either have to pass the general fund levy to maintain our small class sizes. Or we will have larger class sizes at West Valley next year, because we will not be able to sustain the salaries that we currently have. So that is, will be a bigger conversation for another time, but just so that it is on everyone's radar and everyone is aware. Because our salaries are our biggest expense, that is where we will. And it's, we're not running a levy to pay teacher salaries and give them raises, we're running a levy to maintain our small class sizes. And have the number of teachers necessary to keep our class sizes smaller. And we all know that that is a priority for our community. So, um, and we will continue to look for other ways, either save money or generate funds, but from now on as well.
So this is just to request those funds from the state?
This is, this is the official, hey, we need the money.
Okay, and then they will come back and then we'll, that'll be the final resolution.
And then at the next, so a week before the next meeting, so Soria will run a public notice to let the public officially know in the newspaper. That we will be having um a, we will have a resolution on the agenda at the next meeting. And the resolution will lay out in more detail what's already here. And then if the board approves that, then that resolution is what gets sent on to the county superintendent and on to release the fund.
So this proclamation does go to the superintendent?
Oh, it does go there as well.
Yep, I double checked, so it goes to them and the county commissioner. I don't know if they have to approve it or if it's just the informational piece that says, hey, West Valley needs the funds. And then, yeah, the resolution then goes to the state or the state then will release that funds, those funds to us.
And since this is a reserve fund, this is affecting our taxpayers today.
It's like that, it's like a super savings account, you don't want to touch it unless it's necessary.
Yeah.
And you might not be able to answer this, but what percentage of that reserve fund is what we're asking for?
We have four sixty. We'll have in there. And we are not, so we have tried to plan very conservatively with our budget for the year. We intend to maintain that plan. The purpose of requesting this money isn't so that we can loosen the checkbook for everyone. It is to meet the minimum needs of the school. And that is something that the principals and I, when we look at purchase orders and things that teachers are requesting. We're really scrutinizing if it's a need or a want, if it's something we have to have now or can we wait till later. We're also looking at things like the building reserve fund. So there is, there was some compressor part on an air conditioner that went out. Rather than paying for it out of the general fund, we'll pay for it out of the building reserve. If that's what it's for. The shop out here is not getting a door this year. So we are still heavily scrutinizing our spending. This isn't to loosen the purse string, it's to make things work for this year.
I think it's a good plan, I think, you know, especially, you know, it, it solves the issue this year, this is why you guys put the money aside. Like you said, I think it warrants, you know, in the next year, you know, having towards May. You know, the consideration of running the general fund levy to kind of, like you said, making small class sizes. If not, we'll just have to adjust, effectively adjust, you know, through attrition, adjust, you know, the number of teachers that we have here. And, you know, and a sustainable budget. So it's, it, you know, seeing this again, you know, it's, it's, it is taking a decent chunk out of the reserves that are there, but I think we have time to.
We'll get it back over.
To adjust appropriately next year, there's one kind of, you know, is the, is the turn here, you know, this is what it's there for, so. And over time, you know, we can expect to kind of restore that balance as well.
And for the record, we're not the only one that found out, because I was like, you know, I was very, people had looked at it and, you know, there's several other schools in the, just in the county that are. We need to draw from it too, and that's what it's there for, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that budget level.
Next, I mean, the end of the consideration hiring, of coaching hires.
We had almost all returned, so those who coached last year, if they wanted to continue coaching this year, they just rolled over into this year. Um, we have two new hires, they were advertised. Um, we interviewed for those positions. The two, so on the interview committee with myself, Tina, Terry and Carla Scott, who is, she's a full-time para, but she's also one of our coaches. And we scored all of the interview questions, Terry contacted references based on what we felt was best fit for the program. And the combination of reference checks and interview scores have the two recommendations for statistics. So they're splitting, instead of having a fifth grade coach and a sixth grade coach, they're each going to have one fifth grade team and a sixth grade team. Because they'd let them coach. Terry, we're gonna have to explain that because I can't remember what is it?
They can coach against each other then.
Yeah.
We have four teams. And four teams also in seventh and eighth, we don't have visual space, which is what we have to do. So, um, what we're doing is fifth and sixth each kind of have about a half a season. So one coach will take half the fifth graders and half the sixth. And then there's just the kids are doing two and six daily weekly basketball with one coach. So basically one coach can coach two teams. So that's how we ended up with four teams, but two coaches. Coaches still working the school. But the kids living half and half, and so Cindy and I talked about, you know, what is their initial.
So they're not necessarily combined, there's a fifth grade one and then a sixth grade one, right?
Two fifth.
Seems like a good solution, especially just last year where it was kind of difficult to even run these programs in the coming years. So I think that was a good idea, just to kind of say, hey, if we can do half, half time.
I know how important it is for the kids and, and the families and there's nothing more cool. I didn't need a part of the warriors. You know, I just. And we all agree with this school, we just try to be super flexible through the, whatever it is. What happens at tournament time? Um, so fifth graders won't go to a tournament and there is typically isn't like a whole tournament, but it's just kind of a round robin.
Right.
Um, sixth graders will go, um, we're hosting the seventh grade tournament. And then somewhere else we do it. But it'll work fine because between those two courses, they'll each just have one term. Right, they won't have a fifth tournament and a sixth. Coaches won't have to do two tournaments.
No, but, um, I mean, how do they like the kids that only get to play halftime? When it comes to tournaments, do they get to play both? I mean, which, which team gets to go?
They both do.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I mean, lots of scenarios went through my brain, but it's easier if a, a coach has a fifth and a sixth. To them when they go to a tournament, both coaches can go, because sometimes they might play together, right, play against each other. And so.
Yeah, so instead of one coach taking two teams.
Yeah.
Each team will have their own coach at the tournament, but all of the kids who are qualified for the tournament, which they all will, will all get to play. So it's not, the kids aren't getting short at a tournament.
And honestly, I've been like asked at some other agencies for adding a couple of agents in there, because they do have.
Yeah.
So I would need to couple that. And some scrutiny, so they can play with each other.
Sure.
And you've got it. Okay, um, all right, we have any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to hire the coaches. A second.
Right.
It would be nice if we could uh just reconsider kind of, you know, in the past we've had like the, their application or their email.
So I have all of those here.
Okay.
Um, I have their letters of interest and their references and I also have our, our interview form. Um, so if you, if we wanted to see those, if we wanted to have closed sessions to talk about these in greater detail, we can. And that, that's just up to the board if we want to have that kind.
Uh, information items, expenditures.
That is under your package, sir, it's a big document.
What do you do?
It's not complete, it's. Getting there. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There's, and I think, I mean, the first. So the first seven pages are the general fund. And like I said, it's not quite complete with the general fund and then. The rest one would be. Oh, food services shouldn't be in our, that's why I'm on the.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's just for your review or, yeah.
This looks really good though.
It's gonna keep growing. Yeah, and once we get the amendments and all that, then, then at least it gives you a, a starting point for new ones.
Will you update this that you, people like me who are in that worship?
Every month, yeah, after the bills are cleaned, then I'll print this off before the meeting and, yeah.
Well, I like it in your state too, because things are really easy, this is where we're on track or not.
Right, and it's helping in. Helping us to clarify how purchases are coded. Because already I'm noticing trends in how things have evolved and how we need to be sure that we're, we're coding those purchases correctly. Because that is what kind of helps us in the next year, make better decisions about how we're budgeting the money. It's coming in this year and one of the first things I asked Felia for is, I want to know how much everybody, you know, how much we've spent out of each little department. And the package she printed was massive and it was like. Just because the codes between business managers changed. And there were three business managers coding things three different ways. We've had to go through and just cost referent multiple reports to try to get an idea of how even one particular item or one area was being stepped. So, um, getting that cleaned up. The, the biggest step in that is as I review the purchase orders, I write the budget code on it. Because Felia doesn't know what these things are, um, because she's not an educator. And I don't expect her to know those things, but I can look at them or I can meet with the principals and we look at them together. And we can decide what, what type of expenditure is it? And put the appropriate code on it so that she's able to do, keep track of it better.
I like the thing.
Part Marilyn's seen my desk. And with Black Mountain, there's like ninety different reports. And so, um, the county was like, try this one. And so when I pulled it, before it was like a hundred and sixty pages, I was like, I can't print that five times or, you know, but this one at least. And I was like, I can't print that five times or, you know, but this one at least thirty pages, yeah.
And not create a lot of paper.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it'll get better.
All that hard work is gonna pay off and make things easier.
It will be easier, yeah.
It's been a great morning, hopefully.
Why not? So when, uh, like just, you know, in the future, so when you present us with this budget, we have the bills for the month that we're approving, with the bills already included in what's presented here?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so this is the end of September. So as of nine thirty, that's all the bills that are paid.
Mm-hmm.
And then, yeah, so then October will be from October one to October thirty.
Yeah, great, right.
It may even be worth it, hopefully, maybe even making like a spreadsheet of your coding of what's going just so that we can keep it consistent, you know, moving forward. So there's like something to refer back to.
We just deny her that we're doing that.
Just so that it's like, because of the turnover we've had, just to make sure that it's like, okay, well, here's the code that we do for this. So like, well, I mean, I watched Cecilia a little bit late, I'm like, where are you? Are you coming to work today? Where are you at?
Eight oh three, I'm stuck in traffic. No, I've got a few years to leave.
You know, some of this old dial back in, when you look at your career. And that is. Yeah, it goes back to, I, I was, I was a Girl Scout, I'm very long time ago. And we were taught, you, we think better than you found it. So my hope would be at some point, I am going to use this value, we know that, and so is Cecilia. And I told her, was it twenty-seven years? Yeah, so in twenty-seven years.
Funny. It's twenty-five actually, twenty-five, it's twenty forty-seven is what I can tell her.
Our, our goal will be to lead things better than we found it because that is.
Been a challenge.
Yeah, that's just a good motto to have. But, uh, but we're enthusiastic about the work, it's like that.
Even on the worst days, like come back the next day and, we're good, we can do this.
Thank you, guys.
And just for the record, according to Masco, a new clerk is new for five years. They're new for five years, so just keep that in mind. So we're only at year one right now, so we don't need to go.
We thought there was a lot to learn.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the A and B false counts, I did, we did that.
Yeah, so that was, so that's our count that we'll get our funding for. Uh, we count, um, October and February, I believe. And so that's just what we submitted to the state, those are the numbers that.
One.
The reason on.
Fifty-three and then.
Well, so there's two actually. Um, there's one who had been absent ten days prior. We can't count that one. And then the other one is only a part-time student. I think we only do like one class year and then, I don't know, maybe the director of the rest of it, I'm not sure. So those two, we don't get to count on, but, yeah.
Do you have any, uh, just would be a roll that plateau and bring insights into that or just?
I can tell you that's hard to buy a house on this salary.
I think that, yeah, part of it. And once those apartments get built, yeah, that's, yeah. I mean, it just seems, it seems completely distracted in the past, right?
Now, last year was skyrocketing and.
Supporting and, right?
So there's no, it's a buyout.
But they're still building. Still willing.
They are.
So probably two, three years, it'll probably jump again.
They're all building, right, by rent. There's a lot of parks, a lot of apartments.
And hopefully some changes with that.
Yeah. Welcome, breathing, yeah.
For that, I'm pleased.
Right. It's been growing at five twenty.
We've grown another five percent back there and that was forty-ish, so.
Yeah.
We're already having classes and they have the, the commons out here and the fishbowl and your office too sometimes, right? Okay, so, yeah, we'll have to put up tents in the parking lot if we get to work more.
We talked about that, you've been done up.
Yeah. Yeah, and they were expensive though, and then you couldn't get rid of them.
Right.
If we're out of classroom. Got one more.
It's just unfortunate, we're gonna have to go for a, a general fund levy. You can't begin to a school levy at the same time. A bond and a levy, I don't think, I don't think that's, I mean, that's, we need a school, but, but essentially we have to do this, this fund. Sure, why is it go for bond thing? I guess that's, think about. Who's all, huh? Yeah. Okay, uh, budget amendment procedures, I think you, are you ready to get?
Yeah, that's just the information showing you the steps that we'll go through. Um, so first step is the proclamation, next month will be the resolution.
And you'll get all that information, which is getting processed and all the steps and things or whatever.
The goal was to have it all done before the holiday set, just because everybody needs to slow down between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And we would like for all of our stuff to be done and out there so that we're not, you know, on the bottom of somebody's pile of papers somewhere.
Right. So we should be able to. Sounds like you said that right. Okay.
Thanks for including, I appreciate it. That little spreadsheet, really, you see what the steps are.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have I all those in favor?
Bye.